Welcome. Welcome, everybody, to the January 19th, 2023 Town Council Meeting. First time I've said that in public, so here we go. Let the record read that the entire council minus Councilman Fink are present. At this time, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Need to modify the agenda.
Would you like to modify the agenda?
Yes, I understand that we are removing this special presentation from the agenda.
I believe we did, yes.
Okay. And I'll move to approve the modified agenda.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. At this time, is there any public comment on any item or is there any public comment on any item that is on the agenda? Hearing none, approval of the minutes of the December 15 Town Council Meeting.
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the December 15 closed session.
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the January 3 special meeting.
Move to approve?
Second.
And the ayes have it. Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Lastly, approval of the minutes of the January 3 closed session.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Okay. You know, there was once an idea that we just go ahead and make this one big approval.
Yeah.
But the town attorney at the time said no. Okay. Town administrators' report, we've read Holly's report. As always, I ask Holly if there's anything special that you'd like to point out before we go around the.
There, I just have one, one new update from Army Corps of Engineers on the dredging. They did report that they've completed their post-dredge survey and approximately 27,000 cubic yards of material has been removed, and they expect the jetty work to start early part of February.
Okay, very good. I'll begin with Councilwoman Hartman.
I just wanted to comment, I'm glad that those vines were removed from the trees. They really look like heck, and we're bad for the trees, and we love trees. So that was fantastic. And then, I have a question, I think. On page six, number five, the coastal resiliency technical assistance, the second to the last line, you have the cost of inundation at the treatment plant. Is that referring to storm water instead of sewage water?
So it's storm water and flow, so both.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I had.
Councilman?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, sir.
My usual question, page two, on the sidewalk on 261, any updates on that?
Yes, we have, Wayne did some additional work for state highway that they required for the RFP to be released, and that has all been submitted. We are waiting on approval from OSS Office of Structures, so we're hoping to have that in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Then on page five, under item four, and the coastal resiliency grant, the last sentence there says, "This meeting will be held in Town Hall in live stream," but I'm not clear as to what meeting that is. Page five, last sentence under item four.
So we're having two meetings of the Coastal Resiliency Steering Committee.
Understood.
So you're correct, that that's not going to be held in Town Hall. So there's two meetings being held by the Coastal Resiliency Steering Committee and Coastal Resiliency Task Force. One is going to be February 6 at the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department at 6 o'clock PM, and the second is the 27th at 6 PM. We're aiming for Northeast Community Center, however, I don't have confirmation on that, so it will either be at the community center or here streamed from Town Hall. So we'll get out notices.
I'll touch on that a little bit more during coastal resiliency. Thank you, that's all I have.
Adam?
Thank you. Just so those dates aren't tentative anymore, are they, as in the report?
No, correct. February 6 is confirmed, and the 27th is confirmed, we just have to confirm the location.
Understood. All right, on page two, I was also going to comment on the vines, and I want to thank you for supporting the Green Team in their efforts to have those removed. Thank you very much. Then, moving on to page four, I just want to bring to the town's attention the upcoming outreach for Attack of the Invaders, and I'll mention that in my Green Team report also. It's going to be Saturday, March 4 at 10 o'clock at the Northeast Community Center, and there's a wonderful collaboration with Calver County Parks and Rec, and so we look forward to that talk. Other than that, you answered my questions, thank you.
Very well. Okay, next, Operations Manager Report, we've read Carla's report, if we have any questions, we'll ask Holly, and I'll stay right with you, Councilwoman.
I just, being familiar with the lifeguard operations over at the water park, I'd just like to commend the water park staff on getting the Silver International Aquatic Safety Award through Ellison Sons. I know the nature of the testing that occurs over there throughout the water park season, and it's an extremely good program, and we seem to thrive in that. And so, really, commendation to our lifeguards and that training, and I think it's something that we most definitely should continue through them. That's all I had on this one, thank you.
No questions.
Okeydoke. Sir?
No questions, thanks.
No questions? Very good. Public Works Administrators' Report, we've, we've read Jay's report, if we have any questions of Jay, I'll stay right with you, madam. He's real nervous over there, he thinks you're loading up.
I'm ready, I'm ready.
Volumes of paper.
I've got Larry's question, update on the clock?
Actually, I've been in contact on the phone, they send us a template for the bolt pattern, which I was going to pour the little footer and have it ready when it comes here, but I, I want it in hand before I put the bolts in there. So they were actually due early January, late December, and it's looking more like the first part of next month. And there's some different, there was a little bit of manufacturing issues, but to be honest, I think they're having some internal hiring people issues, but it is, everything's good, it's going to be here, and as soon as it's here, we'll, so hopefully by next council, we'll all know what time it is.
Are we? Are we going to have any kind of, anything when that goes up that clock? I mean, generally for the town, some sort of recognition?
Oh yeah, why not? Why not?
I mean, we keep asking about it, so you know. Thank you.
We might want to wait till after winter. So I'll go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
I was thinking Peggy.
No problem.
Councilman?
No questions. Um, yeah, Jay, there's some markings that have been going on in Richfield Station. I guess there's just been a lot of homes that are lined up, and y'all have been marking, I guess, the water lines there, what is all that for?
I'd have to look at the actual missed utility ticket, but 90% of them there are for Comcast. They're either doing a underground lateral from pad to pad, or they do a shot under the road, and if it's where they're going to bore anything, it's a mandatory meeting with me, which we haven't had, so more than likely it's pedestal to pedestal, but you still have to mark every utility.
So you think that maybe that's just, that's not the town, though, over there, ready to do like maybe your proactive work that you've been talking about with the water lines and stuff?
No, it is not.
Okay.
It is not.
Okay. I have a question about the Richfield Station, that unfinished portion down our crest view, where we've got that fencing that lines between the Fishing Creek Trail and it kind of comes through, the fencing that's been, are we still renting that fencing?
We are, we're renting half of it now, if you remember, there used to be two sides. We're still renting or leasing, if you will, the other part of it.
I guess if you had a redo, you might have just bought all of that outright, huh?
Definitely, probably would have. One thing is, they have changed out panels, and there's been different things, they've given us a break since we had it for a while, but
Yeah.
When, when the town initially rented it, it was supposed to be for six months to a year, 11 years.
It was like six years ago.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, you know, that portion is ongoing. That's my, that's it, thank you.
Thank you for the update on the Jaworski Memorial Clock. Just a clarification under your item on flushing, first item says, "Next flushing is scheduled for late November."
Yeah, I see that. So the November flushing didn't happen because we were still offline with Richfield, I think that was, I left that in there by error from my last report, so that did not happen, so we're going to go back to the regu- regular schedule, which is March.
Great, thank you, that's all I have.
Sure.
Thank you, Jay.
Sure.
Okay, next, Water Reclamation Treatment Plant, we've read Josh's report, if we have any questions, I'll stay, stay right with the good Councilwoman.
Hi, Josh, I have two questions, if I may, or clarifications or whatever. On page two, last paragraph, it talks about improvements to the headworks at the plant, and I'm glad to see that we're, if I read this properly, looking at grants to help with that. Is that what the moonshot missions was about?
Yes, that was a, something that John had started before his retirement, and I was just getting caught back up to speed with what they had discussed before.
After our tour of the wastewater treatment plant, I do recognize, you know, the need for that headwork, so if there's anything that we should do, or I would suggest that we could do, when it comes to a budgetary perspective, putting some money aside in line item or something to start saving for the headworks, I'd be totally in favor of that.
Okay.
And I have a question, I just didn't understand it as I read it on page, I guess it would be page three, it talks about a Bay Restoration Fund annual O&amp;M grant, so if I, I tried to follow, so do we get a base grant of 45,000, and then because of, are we going to receive extra based on our nitrogen reduction?
Yes.
And in 2021, that was 15,000, so equating to $57,000 in grants from that program, is that about right?
The
I just had trouble following it.
Well, the, the amount for the poundage for nitrogen is actually based off of how many people have applied for it, and how much funding is remaining out of the original grant funds that the state does. So it's a number that's going to change annually.
Okay, I just want to make sure, kind of clarify my understanding on that, I wasn't quite following how, how it worked, but I
Right.
Think I understand now, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you.
I only had a question that's already been answered under the moonshot efforts, and just thank you for another excellent report, Josh, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a good job, thank you for being on top of so many different things over there.
Thanks. So yeah, I just wanted to mention, you know, as I read this, number one, I had a question, so the, the ear tests, the audiometric, so what, what led to that? I mean, that's not something that you all did normally, or?
To my knowledge, here, testing of the noise levels in buildings
Yeah.
Have not been done in the past, and we're trying to do that to start development hearing conservation plan. That way, most of the guys don't wind up like me, where I have to wear hearing aids, or I should wear hearing aids, I just don't. So it's one of those things, it's a safety policy that we're trying to get implemented.
Yeah, no, that's great, I appreciate that, that you guys are being proactive on that. I was, I was surprised that that hadn't already been done at some point, you know.
To my knowledge, it hasn't, I haven't seen any record of it.
Okay. And the only other thing, when I read this, I'm always fascinated by your reports, because you go into so much detail, and, you know, as I was reading it, I was like thinking about CSI Miami, and I was like, well, maybe, maybe you guys should like do WRTPI, you know, because you have these investigative narratives that you go on about, you know, this problem happening and how you track it down, and it is, it is kind of fascinating, seriously, so anyway, nice report, thank you.
Councilman, I think she spent too much time in Puerto Rico. Where's the Miami airport getting there? Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yep, again, similar, congratulations on qualifying for the restoration grant, that's fantastic. And I just have a question on page four, the last page. And it's nothing to do with your working, I just have a question about the equipment. So there, the top paragraph for the packing seal, which had frozen during extremely cold weather, I grew up near Buffalo, you don't get extremely cold weather, so how does, how is that, like, what do they do elsewhere? If this is that bad, do they have them inside?
They would be inside, or there would be some sort of protection to keep it from freezing. Basically, the packing, the way it operates is when the pump runs, some of the process water that's being pumped out goes up through that seal, and that's what seals the shaft from leaking and also lubricates it, cools it. When the pumps are off, water's still in there, and I think it was last year, we had a cold snap where it was high winds down the teens, and both of the packing glands actually shattered from it.
All right.
So we're trying to prevent that from occurring
It's like sort of the outside pipes of a house, then.
Pretty much, and they were, they're, they're just two small cast iron pieces, but they cost about $1,000, Pete, so we'd rather not have to replace those.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Next, Code Enforcement Report, we've read Dennis's report, I'll stay with Councilwoman Peggy.
Hi, I just have a question to understand. So I'm looking at the first page where you've got one thing, and then I'm looking at page three, where there's lots of things, some is closed. Is it all closed? Are those relevant, the first report, the second report?
Which one were, which one are you looking at? I didn't, I didn't bring it in front of me this
I guess it's all closed. Oh, no, just, I guess it's the detail, so the
One should be, one's going to be a closed summary, and another one's going to be an open.
Oh, it's the closed summary, thank you, that's all.
And I do, one thing I would like to say, I, that was my fault, for anybody that needs one, I do have a rental registration report, I forgot to send that, so I do have that if y'all want copies of it.
Give that to Holly, if she doesn't have it, all right. Thank you. Sir?
Yeah, no questions, thank you. I had a question about, I know that there was a report a few months ago, where it seemed that there was a public nuisance that was being caused by maybe some overfeeding of some animals on the outskirts of town, is there any update on how that may have been resolved?
We are looking into that, it's on my right, as I quote, radar, I have been driving, doing the preliminary drive-bys, monitoring that property. Right now, it's, they're feeding deer, I don't see them really doing anything else other than that, so.
The story had originally, you know, with the buzzers and these
Right.
Other things that we'd seen, it seemed like they were possibly creating a safety issue, maybe a health issue.
Right, right.
But it sounds like that's been abated a little bit.
Yes.
And they pulled back, and we're just kind of wait and see.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks.
Wait and see is exactly what I was going to say, thank you.
No questions, but I really do appreciate the maps.
Yeah, actually, Holly actually showed me that, so I'm going to go ahead and stick with it, it's, I found it very helpful, so.
It's a really good idea, and you can really see the differences between where there's HOA compliance and then not.
Yeah.
I mean, as one would expect, but I find it really useful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Town Treasurer's Report, we've read Brittany's report, I'll stay right with Councilwoman Bodine, if you have any questions for Brittany.
Just one question on the line item reconciliation that'll be becoming for us, there's no real surprises in there, is there? I mean, I wouldn't expect. Okay, thank you, that's all I had, thanks.
This is coming, bud.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
No questions, thanks. No questions, thank you.
Congratulations on your first report, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Town Engineers' Report, we've read Wayne's report, I'll stay right with Councilwoman Hartman, if she has any questions for Wayne.
Hey, I don't have any questions, but I will say, I saw your surveyors near Seagate, so you know what they're looking at. The Jaworski Memorial Walkway. No questions, thanks.
Questions?
No questions for Wayne, thanks.
One of my questions has already been answered, the other one on the headworks at the Reclamation Treatment Plant shows anticipated January release, any updates on that?
It's ready, actually, I made a note here for, we're meeting next Monday to go over a bunch of stuff here in Town Hall. We'll go right at that point.
Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Thank you. Deputies' Report before we, and we, and we read the deputies' report before we begin with any council questions, would you mind bringing up your colleagues, introducing them to the
Absolutely. This is, I had them come in, they haven't seen the town meeting, so I figured, you know, they get a little insight on what goes on here. This is Deputy Mr. and Deputy DeSantis, they're working tonight, they're assigned to the Twin Beaches, so I just wanted to come in, have them come in and see what goes on.
First, I'd say, welcome, and I, and my only question is, how'd you get such good duty?
Just a hand we were dealt, but I can't complain, been here most of the years, so no complaints for me.
Very well. Thank you.
Comment, having grown up in the city of Chicago, seeing this many places, it makes me nervous.
Well, I'm even, I'm even more nervous because I'm actually older than the two of them put together, so that's, it's kind of got me thinking, but anyhow, thank you, I'll begin with, if we have any questions?
Same here, thank you guys back there, thank you for showing up.
Yeah. And I'll just ask you, do you have any, any update on our, on our hero?
Oh yeah, he, he just went to the hospital two days ago, or yesterday, one, sometimes this week, and got the staples and sutures removed. So far, everything looks good, but he still has a very long road to recovery. I'm looking privately, if I were to guess, not being a medical professional, at least a year before he can even think about coming back. If he comes back.
And, yeah, well, and, and obviously, you know, the town has been, you know, praying for him, and, and very thankful and grateful for, for not only what, you know, he was doing that evening, for what, for what you guys do all the time, and my only comment, and I actually made the same comment to your boss the other, the other day, I said, you know, when, for all the years that Mike Evans was the sheriff, you know, you, obviously, when you're sheriff, you get complaints more than you get anything else, you adhere all this, you know, all they do is run up Route 4, and all they do is patrol Route 4, well, guess what? Guess what's coming down Route 4? And it was very clear the other night, what, what's coming down Route 4, because, you know, one of our guys got in a shootout, you know? So yeah, thanks for what you do, because every, every, what may be a simple stop, you know, could end up a dangerous situation, as you know, but we, the people, need to understand that, so very grateful for what you all do, so, so thank you.
Yeah, deputies, thanks for being here this evening, I'm sure you'd rather be patrolling outside of those doors than sitting inside the doors, but it's good to see some faces there. You know, I, I don't have any particular questions, it's just the usual, can't thank, can't thank the first responders enough, in that, you know, your, your well-being and safety are on all of our minds frequently, so particularly, you know, I know that the community's concerned, and they superped all the first responders, but, you know, with the council and the administration here, we think about you quite a bit, so, thank you for your service.
Thank you for the introductions, and for being here tonight, and for your service, I do not have any questions on your report, so thanks.
I have no questions, stay safe.
Thanks again, right, thank you. And we appreciate, I appreciate how you hang around until all the staff gets home after the, after the meeting, that's really appreciated, so thank you. Next, North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, if we have any questions, we'll just funnel them through Larry.
I just offer a comment.
Yes, sir.
Just so everyone knows, we've, at the firehouse, we've started planning already for our 100th anniversary, which will be in '26, so we'll be working with both towns on coordinating some of the planning for that event, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This week, we celebrated Martin Luther King Day, we said hello to a new governor, and we said goodbye to Governor Larry Hogan. My mayor's report is basically, I'm going to be some inspirational words from, from the governor and from Dr. King. As part of Governor Hogan's fair, this is a governor that left the state with 77% approval rating, so whether you're a D or an R or an independent, or you don't even care to vote, it, it doesn't really matter, 77% of Marylanders gave him approval rating, which is pretty rare, it's, it's, it's very uncommon. And one of the words that, that Governor Hogan said when he left was, he was talking about downtown, down on, you know, Capitol Hill, he, "Toxic politics will not restore America, only real leadership will do that. We must reject and overcome fear and hatred in our politics and in our society, and we, and we must work to rebuild the bonds of trust and respect among Americans." Now, 60 years before he said that, Dr. King, who has many inspirational quotes, and I would encourage anybody and everybody to, you know, learn up on, on some of the things that he had, he said, it's really inspirational, but Dr. King said, "Let no man pull you so low as to hate him. I decide to stick with love. Hate is too great a burden to bear." Having said that, Happy New Year from Mayor Pat, I wish you all love, happiness, and good health in 2023. Thank you very much. Next, no resolutions and ordinances? For reports, I believe we received a report from, from Planning and Zoning, we, no Board of Appeals hearing. T Box, given the, the weather, has probably taken a little bit of a break. Climate Change Advisory Group, Mr. Larry?
I'll just offer my apologies, this is a fairly lengthy report, because there's been a lot going on, it's been a busy month. As previously discussed and mentioned in the Town Administrator's Report, our town is participating in a project called CREATE, Climate Resilience Evaluation and Awareness Tool. Effort is being led by U.S. EPA, and includes Chesapeake Beach along with the towns of Cambridge and Chrisfield. Study is focused on the impact of climate change on town infrastructure, particularly our sewers and the Water Reclamation Treatment Plant. On Wednesday, January 11, our town hosted the EPA Study Group, toured the plant and areas around the plant. In the afternoon, we participated in a virtual work session with towns of Cambridge and Chrisfield. Session was followed by another virtual work session on Friday, and we will have yet another work session tentatively scheduled for early February. The overall purpose of this effort is to quantify financial impacts that may hit our town due to climate change issues. Another issues, on Tuesday, January 10, the town's Coastal Resiliency Task Force met to discuss our ongoing efforts to quantify and address potential impacts of sea level rise and climate change. On Tuesday, December 20, Coastal Resiliency Steering Committee held a meeting, led by Chair Jeff Foltz, and the purpose of this meeting was to update residents on progress being made by the Coastal Resiliency Task Force. On Tuesday, January 10, I listened in on the North Beach Flood Committee meeting, they are making good progress on their efforts, and are about to release a document titled Compound Flood Action Plan in a couple months, which addresses issues within the town of North Beach. Again, as mentioned in the Town Administrator's Report, stay tuned for announcement of the town's holding community meetings to seek community input. They're scheduled for, at the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department on February 6 at 6 PM, and the second is planned at the community center on Monday, February 27. Co-Chair Keith, anything to add?
No, thank you, Larry, I just want to commend you and the Coastal Resiliency Task Force for all the great work you've been doing on that, as well as with the advisory group, so thanks.
Just so you know, and these guys know, I did do a little bragging about you guys in what you did last week at the MML meeting, you know, last week, so they're, they're, and I think it's important that we can partner with people that are on the other side of the, of the bay, it just makes sense, so thank you very much. EDC?
Calver County Economic Advisory Commission did not hold meetings in either December or January, the Economic Development Authority held a meeting on Monday, January 9. This is an important item, the county is still accepting applications for small business assistance grants, these grants can be up to
These grants can be up to $50,000 and are funded by a $600,000 grant to the county from ARPA funds. Applications will be accepted until January 31st. Contact the county economic development staff if anyone is interested. Earlier today, I participated in the first meeting of the county's Tourism Roundtable. Purpose of this group is to consider ways to promote increased business across the county and help support our local businesses. And finally, we discussed this a couple of months ago. There's an effort underway to look into the feasibility and economic impact of a possible Chesapeake Bay passenger ferry. Progress is being made on an effort, and RFP actually is about, has been issued to assist in the effort is out, and proposals are due Wednesday, February 15th. Plan is to release the results of this study this summer sometime, looking at the feasibility and economic impacts of a possible Chesapeake Beach Chesapeake Bay passenger ferry. That's all I got. Co-Chair Greg, anything to add?
Nothing to add. Thanks, Larry.
Chesapeake Beach was one of the first tier of the of the cities.
Yes, we are one of the primary stops.
Yeah, okay, very good. Green Team.
Thanks. I have a few updates and announcements. One is, like I mentioned during the Town Administrator's Report, you'll see flyers for Attack of the Invaders that Saturday, March 4th, at 10 o'clock at the Northeast Community Center. And it really truly is a great partnership with Calvert County Parks and Iraq and the Northeast Community Center itself. So I just would like to thank those individuals that have been helping organize this. It's a really cool event. And the guest speaker is Carrie Wixted. Second, we're working towards becoming a Tree City USA. One of our next steps will be an ordinance supporting Tree City USA. And the Green Team is reviewing two ordinances from other towns that have successfully gone through this program. So hopefully, the town council will see that in due course in the coming months, an ordinance before you, if everything works out the way we anticipate. Also, we're looking at doing a tree inventory in the coming weeks, two coming months, for the trees on municipal properties in the in the town. So that's kind of cool. Third, I'd like to really express on behalf of the Green Team, our our sincere thanks for allowing us to participate in the landscape contracting, and asking for our opinions means the world to the committee members. And so we just cannot thank you enough for allowing us that opportunity, and we look forward to it. It's an extremely well-written contract, and the town should be commended on their efforts in Holly. I mean, it's really well done. Next, another activity that we're going to be partaking in is a five-year town tree plan, and it's on the radar, and we'll be coming up with that. Again, we'll share with the town council, the mayor, administration as we work through it collaboratively. And then finally, I'd like to mention that our next meeting is here at the town hall, and it'll be Thursday, January 26th at 6:30. And so it's a quite active group, and so we look forward to anyone's participation in this committee. And once again, thank you for every all the support that we're getting. It's a wonderful collaboration all the way around. Thank you.
Thank you. Kellum's Revitalization Committee.
I don't have anything new to update.
Thank you, sir. Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition.
Thank you, Mayor. So just just given that it's January, wanted to just kind of revisit where the Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Committee started. So, you know, our after our first full year, which was 2017, there were 24 non-fatal overdoses in the Twin Beach towns and five fatal overdoses in the Twin Beaches. In 2022, there were four non-fatal and two fatal. So I think, you know, the towns, the the counties, the Sheriff's Department, the Calvert County Health Department, Calvert Health, I know I'm missing one here, Calvert County, Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse, and and of course, our group, you know, all had worked together to try to, you know, raise awareness about this issue, put in place different programs and and and, you know, treatments that are out there, getting the word out about naloxone, getting training, getting education out over the last six years. I think it has helped. You know, it's hard to tell from the numbers, you know, strictly because with naloxone, a lot of people aren't reporting, you know, non-fatal overdoses now. But I think, you know, just the fact that only, you know, two people passed this past year as compared to five when this started, you know, means there's three families that aren't dealing with that sadness and heartbreak that, you know, three lives, you know, maybe were saved. So, you know, I think it's well worth the effort, and I think it's it kind of does show that kind of grassroots efforts of of raising awareness about these issues are helpful and but there's still more work to be done, and I'm hoping, you know, we're going to be able to continue that work for as long as possible to be sure people get the the assistance they need with, you know, drug abuse issues. So with that, I think you you may have seen that we've postponed our overdose awareness sculpture project temporarily, and that's due to, well, quite frankly, lack of entries at this point. So Sandy Mattingly, who's the project lead for our coalition, she reached out to the Maryland State Arts Council to get some advice on, you know, maybe what we could do better and how we could, you know, reinvigorate this effort, and they gave us some really great advice on how to do that. And so we're going to try to follow that, so we're going to postpone the the release of of of, well, the actual sculpture competition by about one year. But what we're going to do is, you know, we're going to be applying for a grant from the Maryland State Arts Council to to help with planning of this event. They said we have a really good chance of of getting that in their conversations, but, you know, nothing's guaranteed. So hopefully, that'll be successful. And and then they have a second grant for $20,000 to $35,000 that would actually be could be used towards the award for the person who wins the contest. And I think that was part of our issue is that our the awards were too small to really entice an artist to spend half a year developing something for $3,000. And so, you know, and they will help advertise it statewide instead of just in the kind of the tri-county area. And so we're looking forward to working with them, and we're hoping it's going to to all work out this time around. And if it does, you know, work out going forward, we plan on hopefully announcing the winner at this 2023 Glow Vigil in August, and then the full sculpture unveiling would happen at the 2024 August Glow Vigil. It's kind of the revised timeline, presuming everything goes forward as planned. So that's where that project stands, and our next Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Committee meeting is January 31st at 6:00 PM right here in this room. So if you're interested, I hope you can make it.
Thank you, sir. And as an as an FYI, too, I guess, you know, the council, the town, you know, Keith, everybody, the Governor Moore just recently created a a special cabinet, and it's called the the Opioid Response Department, I guess. And he it's a new it's a new department, and and he appointed Hagerstown Mayor Emily Keller to be the the secretary. So she retired from being a mayor, so now that's what she is. And the reason that I bring it up is, you know, twofold. One is that, you know, you know, Governor Moore reached out to a municipality mayor to take this spot, which which I think is good. It shows that the mayor that the governor is looking at municipalities. And two, Keith, she's very she herself has been, you know, tragically a victim of of this, and and she's had a passion for this about as long as we all got have been in office, about six years ago. So I would say you might want to just, you know, keep an eye on where this new department goes, and you you we definitely have a friend up there because it's a it's a former mayor, you know. So that's that's good news. And secondly, Senator Jackson did drop a bill to declare August 31st opioid abuse awareness day or abuse awareness day, something like that, Keith? Yeah, okay, so we'll so we'll offer and and I'll be testifying in favor of that, I'm quite sure that I was asked to already, so I'll keep the council abreast of my testimony on that, you know. So thank you, everybody. No Charlie Fink, must be why this meeting's going so smoothly.
I could I could speak to it, though.
Just say, you know, you always wonder what, you know, when somebody's missing, you go, aha, now we know what the problem was.
I'm Miss Mayor.
Hope you're listening, Charlie. I don't even think he has Wi-Fi. Oh, you want to?
I could speak to walkability.
Oh, you're going to speak to it? Okay, I'm sorry. I was so busy giving Charlie a hard time. It was so exciting to be able to do that.
Well, it is fun. Yeah. So, Mary, for the Economic Community Roundtable Promoting Money Movement, I say promote connected bike trails and have people moving through. And on thinking of that, we could promote walkability in Chesapeake Beach by, you know, reducing the speed limit in all of our streets to three miles an hour.
Ban cars.
No, yeah, no, okay. I did want to say, from the walkable community, we're very fortunate now in that our early projects are being shepherded through both the grant world and the RFP world by town staff and the Mexican associates group. So that's where we are now. We haven't been having meetings. We're waiting till those projects get underway and get further towards completion before we start lining up new tasks for everybody to do. So thank you for that.
So I have to, you know, I I have to say, because it's right now with with law enforcement right here in the room, if if we have a case of of somebody spray painting the zero on the 30 mile an hour, you know, signs around town, I think you gave them a lead, madam. I'll leave it at that. Okay, no unfinished business, new business. Town Council to consider the the reappointment of Farhad Safay to the Ethics Commission for a three-year term commencing March of 2023. As we know, Farhad took filled out Ingrid's term, and now this will be a term of of his own. Is there a motion to approve the reappointment?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Okay. Town Council to consider authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Windmill Farms for three years with two one-year options of renewal. The contract award for year one to three amounts to $531,990 base lump sum and $376,940 for the year, four to five base lump sum for the general fund landscape line item and mitigation fund. Before I ask for a motion, is there anything you want to that you want to share with with the council?
Review of the?
Yeah, we'll get it have an overview from the.
The town went out to bid for our general landscaping services proposal. The bid was posted on eMaryland Marketplace, posted on town website and our local papers. The bid was sent to 371 bidders through eMaryland Marketplace who contract services for the cost codes sought. We did hold a mandatory pre-bid meeting here at town hall, and we had four bidders in attendance at that pre-bid meeting. We only received one bid proposal on January 13th from Windmill Farms. Windmill Farms has worked for the town for over 20 years and has been our general landscaper as well as doing some labor service projects for public works. So we expanded the RFP this year in a lot of coordination with the Green Team, so we've added a lot of new projects. I can kind of list a few of them that are in the the lump sum that you might want to be aware of. One is the management of the Fragmities near Kellum's Field. We have the management of Japanese knotweed per the Green Team, and that is near the points of entry at Bayfront Park, more towards the beach side. So that's mitigating that year-round maintenance of the three new pocket parks that are going in, and then also keeping the trees clear through all public lands, but specifically at the waterfront area near the boardwalk heading to Bayfront Park that had been overtaken by kudzu and vines and strangling out the trees. So for the health of the trees, we've added that into the contract. We also added some new itemized pricing that council has inquired about over the past, such as street sweeping services. So we have those options as well. So we have a lump sum proposal before you this evening for, as the mayor had mentioned, for a five-year contract, a three-year contract with two one-year options for renewal, which would total to five-year options at $908,930.
What I'll do is entertain a motion and a second, and then we'll have comments. So is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
The comments, I'll be I'll begin with the the maker of the motion.
I'd just like to say once again just how lucky we are to have been able to, as a Green Team, collaborate on this RFP, and the results are really quite strong. And so, once again, thank you for your efforts, and I I hope to get your support on this. It's worthwhile.
Thank you, sir.
No questions?
Um, first, I'll say I'm in full support of anything that this group wants to do regarding the extras and all of this stuff. It's all good stuff. It's good movement movement forward for the Green Team. And I the town has managed to retain, in my opinion, the right landscaper. We know we've got a longstanding relationship with them. I'm certainly pleased that he's ended up appears to be ended up in a way to get this contract. But I have to 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 say that only obtaining the one bid, this kind of goes against my, you know, I to sum it up, is it a good price or is it a bad price? We don't know because we really don't. That's the only point of reference we have is that one quote. And I've got a lot of experience with bidding stuff, and, you know, you like to try to see stuff that, especially when you don't know the individuals you're dealing with. I know that things can happen, and you can end up like the town has before in the past, end up with a contractor that is just under par, and you end up having to terminate contracts and things like that. But I'm certainly in support, again, of everything that that's in this package. I think it's very exciting. The town deserves it, and I don't I don't want to be overly critical about the one bid because it's just it's just it's counterintuitive for me a little bit, and I would just emphasize that in, you know, the future, and we're looking for bidding stuff. I know it's tough, can be hard, and it'll be a lot of work, but you get that point of reference, it kind of helps you make sure that, you know, your pricing is in alignment. And we we know the individual here with with Les. I know that he has all the greatest intentions in mind here, and he's going to serve he's going to serve us well, so thanks.
And I think it would be an understatement to say we're getting a great deal here. Leave it at that. Sir?
Yeah, my question is, are we commenting on two or three or both?
No, no, two.
Two, which is just the lump sums.
Just the motion.
So I can have a chance to comment on the line items later. All right, no call, no questions then.
Okay. Madam?
Actually, I just have a question, which is probably for Councilman Boudin. The part about mitigating.
Probably we should not go to her, we should go to.
All right, to Holly.
To Town Administrator.
Who can then ask, you know, Councilman Boudin. The number three, Japanese knotwood, does adding that into this contract remove the need to have it from the ARPA funds? Because it was also a proposal in the ARPA funds, I think, was to clean up that knotwood, not not weed. So is it is that the same area or those two different areas?
It is the same area.
Super.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thank you. Next, Town Council Consider Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an Agreement with Windmill Farms for Alternate Pricing Option 1, 2, 4, 6, and 10 for an Additional Annual Cost of $29,428 for the General Fund Landscape Line Item and $11,875 for the Chesapeake Beach Water Park Landscape Maintenance Line Item for Year 1 and $6,070 for the for the four years thereafter. Street sweeping will be charged on as as-needed basis per the itemized pricing. Did you want to give an overview this time as well?
I can answer any questions about the itemized pricing.
That's what we'll do then. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Your second?
Second.
I'll begin. Questions with?
I actually have a question on the street sweeping. That would be for the the town streets, not the state streets, right?
So the proposal covered Route 2 is basically from each welcome sign, so Route 260 and 261, so starting at the welcome sign straight down and then both. 260 and 261, so starting at the welcome sign straight down and then both sides north to south, main throughways.
So that means the state won't come and sweep their streets where we are doing it?
We've had some issues. Do you want to go ahead and speak to it?
I know they're looking for a piece of equipment.
And so that did come up, and unfortunately, the state hasn't done it in a while, and they had some problems, and as you can see, so I don't think, or if the, if the state, that's one reason it was bid the way it was, if the state gets their stuff in gear and they start doing it, then we just drop it out of the contract. That's why it was per time instead of every year endlessly.
That's probably still good. I think we should charge them back. But there are plants now growing side of the road where the dirt has accumulated, so good.
Very well. Keith, I saw you had some questions.
I, that, I wanted clarification on that, so it's been answered, so thank you.
Very well.
No, it's all right.
Are you guys in a huddle about that before?
No questions.
Thank you.
No questions.
Madam? All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Good work, everybody. And a special thanks to Holly and Jay and staff for making this happen. I'm really excited about the street sweeping as well. At this time, I ask, is there any public comment? Hearing none, I'll go to the Council Lightning Round, and I'll begin with Councilwoman Bodine.
Just have a good evening, and I look forward to serving with this council and mayor and administration in 2023 and beyond. Thank you.
And I have a lightning round from Charlie. He, he wanted me to share that he had two separate groups of house guests over the holidays, and both groups loved and commented on the lights around town, and he wanted to give a thanks to all for making the town special. Thank you, Charlie. Sir?
If my records are correct, this marks the sixth year for a number of us on the council, and most importantly, what I wanted to point out is the six-year anniversary of our town administrator. So, thank you, Holly, for sticking with us for six years.
Yeah, 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 lucky us. Thank me for hiring her. I've heard that enough, trust me. Okie doke. Sir?
Nothing, totally for me. Everybody stay warm out there, it's safe.
All right. So, yeah, I just wanted to announce, let folks know that there is a scholarship available through Calvert County Parks and Recreation, the Thurman Gray Memorial Scholarship Education Award Program. It's for $1,000 to a graduating senior who's going to be going on to college or higher education, studying, I guess, recreational, recreational degrees, like community sports management, grounds management, natural resources, that kind of thing. So just, they have information over there at the CCPR if anyone has or knows of a graduating senior that's interested in that. There's $1,000 that they could possibly get. They're doing three of those, one Northern, Central, and Southern Districts. So, anyway, y'all have a great evening.
Thank you. Madam?
I just wanted to recognize out loud Dale Norfolk's contribution by what he gave to the town when he redid the three vintage ducks.
Oh, yeah.
And the placement next, I thought the placement next to the marsh was great, and I just thought it was really wonderful that he did that for the town and wanted to thank him, you know, here.
That was a great story, too.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was indeed. And just sharpening the pencils, getting ready for the budget round. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.